Welcome to Represent. Today I have the honour of speaking with Ross King, Ottawa's first Black City councillor, who represents Rita Rockliff Ward, a champion of diversity, inclusion and public service. How are you?
Been great. Thank you for the opportunity to sit down and speak with you.
Thank you, thank you. So as Ottawa's first Black City councillor, you've played a pivotal role in championing anti-racism initiatives. What strategies do you believe are essential to ensure sustained progress in combating systemic racism within our communities?
Well firstly, I think it's important to note that anti-racism initiatives can't be overstated. You know, they represent our commitment to building a world where every individual, regardless of their race, ethnicity or cultural background can live free from fair discrimination and prejudice. And anti-racism initiatives are not just about addressing overt acts of bigotry. They're ultimately about dismantling the structural inequalities and systemic injustice that perpetuate racial disparities in education, employment, healthcare and every aspect of life. So the most important aspect of having initiatives is ensuring that we have a good plan. And that's why I'm pleased that the city of Ottawa created its first anti-racism strategy in 2022 that clearly outlines a blueprint to address racial disparities that impact the Black community, but also the Indigenous and racialised communities and other religious communities. And it's important to have a plan because a plan means substantive action. And we have a strategy that will enable substantive action that will meaningfully and measurably address multiple barriers and disadvantages that many people face in our city. So we have a plan. We have an anti-racism strategy that was approved unanimously by council that focuses on governance, on housing, on economic development, on health, on child and youth development, on workplace and institutional practices. The plan has 28 recommendations, 132 actions. So I mean, it's very clearly transparent in terms of what it's trying to achieve. You can literally see it on the city's website at ottawa.ca/anti-racism. And the wonderful thing about this plan was that the plan was built by the community. You know, the community asked for an anti-racism strategy. They asked for an anti-racism secretariat or anti-racism office. They themselves defined through public consultation the areas of focus. And the city came back with very clear recommendations as to what it needs to do. And the city has committed to doing those things based on data. So ensuring that there's race disaggregated data that will drive the decisions along with ensuring that there's community input as well as ensuring that we continue to build greater internal capacity to actually deliver the services. The bottom line is, is that when you go to your community centre, or you go to a service centre, or you pick up the phone and you call 311, you should be treated fairly. You know, no matter what your race, colour, creed, religion, you should be treated fairly when you are accessing services before your government. So that's the idea. And the thing I'm really proud of is that it wasn't ultimately my idea. The community came to me and said, we need the anti-racism office, we need the strategy. And we need to ensure that's measurable. And we need to ensure that you're coming back to the community. You know, you're not just measuring this, but you're adjusting it to community needs. And so that's what has made me really proud. But to answer your question, you need a plan.
You need a plan. So speaking about community, you've been, you know, you have extensive involvement in various community organisations. You know, showcases your dedication to public service. How do you envision leveraging this experience to foster greater collaboration between local government and grassroots initiatives in addressing community needs?
Well, you know what's interesting in terms of the process that we have around the anti-racism secretariat and the public consultation process, I think we have actually a good framework, a good roadmap based on the work that we had undertaken around the creation of the strategy. In fact, other people in the city turn around and look at the anti-racism secretariat. They look at that unit and they say, this is, you know, a best practice. This is a benchmark in terms of the way that we engage. I mean, when you think of it, the bulk of the strategy was created during the pandemic. So we had to utilise virtual tools to do that. But even before the emergence of the pandemic, we sat down, we had a community meeting in person. The community actually said they wanted all the items that we had just listed, you know, employment equity, better housing, better governance, youth opportunities, better health outcomes. The community themselves defined that. And then when we moved on to greater consultations, we not only had, in a sense, focus groups that looked at different socio demographics and ethnic demographics, such as the Black community and even breaking that down, the Asian community, the Islamic community, Jewish community, Indigenous community. We sat down and we engaged with over a thousand residents to inform the strategy. So I think the key is you have to be really engaged with people. You have to be talking with people all the time. And that's one of the reasons why I go to as many events as I do. You know, I go to a lot of community cultural galas. Some people think, you know, they get cynical about politicians. They're like, you're there for the picture. You're there for the photo op. No, actually, that's where a lot of the important work is done. People can see you, they access you during the regular scope of the day. You know, they're not going to be at City Hall. They're going to be in the community. And it's going to be important that we actually, as elected officials and other policymakers, that we are sitting down and listening to the community on an ongoing basis and trying to have that reflect in the policy that we create. So I think listening and creating new ways, new opportunities to provide input is key. And that's very important at the municipal level. And I'll tell you why. Because usually people are very negative about the city and it's actually understandable. You know, oh, my car got buried by the plough that went by. Oh, I got this parking ticket. I've got to go down to City Hall. Oh, I have a building permit and I get down here and I learned that I need three other building permits to do something. So often people's interface with City Hall sometimes isn't negative and it's reactive. It's not usually proactive. And we had a scenario where the community said, you know what? We want something. And they asked for it, you know, after being really excited about my election in April of 2019. So there was great elation in the community, first Black elected official in the city. And then literally the next month, there was great deflation in May because House Hold in my community had the N-word sprayed painted on their garage door with the words get out. And this was a family that was living in my ward for over 20 years. The matriarch of the family was a family doctor, you know. They felt unwelcome. And we were in their driveway, community members were in their driveway. And they pointed to this and they said, you know, you're newly elected. You know, you understand the impact of this personally, individually, these individual acts of racism. But to the community credit, all the people who were in the driveway said, this is bad. But you know what's worse? We're not treated equally before our government. Our children, we think that our children won't have a good shot at a city job. And to their credit, right there, they asked me, you know, would you work to establish an anti-racism secretariat at the city of Ottawa? And maybe to their astonment, I said yes. And, you know.
They weren't expecting that.
And a few months later, literally in the first budget cycle, we had money allocated for the creation of the unit. After sitting down with the community, like I was telling you, you know, outlining what it should look like, outlining what it should be dealing with. And, you know, we were able to move that proposal to the mayor's office and get unanimous support at the council table for the establishment of an anti-racism office at the city of Ottawa. So, you know, both representation matters and also people's advocacy matters. But it's important to have a process that's driven by people. And that's what I'm really excited about because you don't usually see that, like I said, at City Council. A lot of the things that we do are just prescribed in provincial legislation. And often they either involve levies, penalties, fines or fees. And, you know, that doesn't excite people. But what excites people is when you can say you're trying to establish something that will improve the lives of many in the city. So I am immensely proud. It's not, you know, just, you know, my accomplishment. Frankly, it's the accomplishments of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who have provided input on how to make the city better.
That's great. Tell me about the, you also established the Ross King and Linda Gruzani Scholarship. Can you tell me more about this initiative?
Oh, you know what? I'm a proud alumnus of Carleton University. So is my wife. My wife is a member of the Indigenous community, the Algonquin and Anishnaabe community here in the region. And she's actually a member of the Kitagun ZB band. And one of the things we know is that education is really the key to building success for us individually and as a community. And so we said it'd be important for us to endow a scholarship to ensure that students, whether they're Black, Indigenous or racialised, that they have an opportunity to access some financial aid if they're studying arts and culture at the, at Carleton University. We thought it was very important because there was a lack of resources, of scholarships in that area for, you know, well-deserving students. And sometimes that can turn people off from studying things. And what we just felt was, you know, the financial consideration should not be a barrier if you want to pursue study, culture, arts, liberal arts. You know, there is an importance that we do focus on science and technology. And, you know, I'm proud to note that just a few days ago, there was establishment of a new science and technology fellowship that's going to be at the Science and Tech Museum. Kind of focused there to allow scholars to have access and to talk about the amazing technological and scientific contributions of the Black community in Canada. But it's important for us to create opportunities. My wife is a proud alumnus of Carleton as well. She, like me, has a undergraduate and graduate degree there in art history. And what we had realised was that there weren't the opportunities, especially financial, for diverse communities. So we wanted to ensure that those opportunities were created. So that's, and, you know, frankly, it really excites us. My wife is also a member of the Board of Governors at Carleton University. So we've spent a lot of time at the Carleton University Art Gallery as well. You know, we're really excited about their programming. Their programming over the last, I would say, two decades has been relatively inclusive. I mean, we're starting to have those conversations now about seeing more Canadian art historians, artists and curators of all different ethnic diversities in these institutions. But they were at the leading edge of that 20 years ago. So it was also acknowledgement of the fact that there has been an ongoing commitment to diversity in the university. But like many people, you know, we were working from home, but we were continuing to work. And, you know, we saw some money growing in the bank account. You can't go out and spend it like the way you were going to spend it before. And we said, you know what? It's probably important to make a charitable contribution to the community and to give it to people who need it the most. And I can't think of anybody else than Indigenous, Black, racialised students who need those supports when they're at university. It's already a hard, you know, experience often for many, many people. And, you know, just giving that little amount of financial support to cheer, you know, I think is helpful.
Amazing. Hey, a powerful couple doing wonderful things. I love to see it. Serving also as a council liaison for anti-racism and ethno-cultural relations initiatives, you've been instrumental in shaping the city's anti-racism strategy. How do you, how can municipalities effectively engage with diverse communities to ensure that policy decisions are inclusive and reflective of their needs?
I think you have to bring them around the table. You have to bring all communities around the table. You have to have regular conversations with the communities to have a sense of what they want. You know, I think we heard very clearly that Ottawa residents want issues of racial inequity addressed across the board. And it's important for us to work on an ongoing basis to ensure that the city is taking a lead role in ending all forms of discrimination and oppression. And the only way that you can really do that is by talking to the people who are affected by these challenges every day and getting a sense of what their needs are. And, you know, what you're finding is that they're not extraordinary needs. People aren't asking for any special treatment. They are just asking to be treated normally and to have access to all the other tools that other residents have no problem and experience no barriers in terms of accessing. So, you know, that was the key thing that we heard. We didn't hear people saying, we want something special. They just said, we want access to all the opportunities that other people have had historically and that we've been denied traditionally. And so in order to get to that point, you really have to be continuously listening to people. And you have to start looking at, you know, cultural transformation within organisations. And that takes time because if you have systemic barriers, if you have structural racism in organisations, it takes time because organisations are going to be imperfect. They're made up of people and people are imperfect. But what you do is you identify the challenges. You identify the discrepancies in the way that people are treated or the resources that they access or the wages that they receive. And then you start systematic work on those policies. And then the other element is that you have hard conversations inside the organisation and outside of the organisation to change mindsets. And that actually happens. And there's a story I tell about two years ago, I sat in a meeting of asset management during charge of all the physical work that's undertaken in the city. And, you know, unprompted, they were saying, you know what we're realising? In low-income neighbourhoods, we have scenarios where people don't have access to sidewalks. And those people, you know, low-income people are dependent, highly dependent on active transportation, on bicycles, on walking, on transit. And so they were saying, you know, what we're going to start to do, we're going to start to examine ways of potentially expediting the deployment of sidewalks in older neighbourhoods that were never, where they were never built. In terms of prioritisation, they're starting to say, why don't we look at these lower-income neighbourhoods? And we know in those high priority neighbourhoods, there's a higher prevalence of Black, Indigenous and racialised people. And I was really impressed because, you know, this wasn't prompted by the fact that we had specific policies that were going to direct them to do that. There was a cultural transformation. We're starting to have these conversations. And people in that area, in that unit of the city, just said, you know, let's take it upon ourselves to start looking at these things that create structural barriers for people. So that's where I'm getting excited because I think that, you know, the one thing people get very upset about, I think in the wider, you know, wider society, when you're looking at people who want to engage in cultural wars and people who want to, you know, oppose EDI. Number one, EDI is really about equity. It's about ensuring that all people are able to participate in the society. That's something that we want. We want people to actually, you know, be able. And there's a constitutional expectation that people will be treated the same. Especially when we have multiculturalism actually written into our constitution. You know, there's an expectation that we treat all people equally. And when we treat them equally, guess what? The community benefits, the society benefits. You know, if we hold back economic resources from people, then they are going to do poorly. And in the aggregate, the society, the economy, the region, the city, the country will do poorly. It's not going to do as well as if everybody had access to services that would allow them to prosper. So, you know, that's the view. I think, you know, we need to change that cultural mindset so that people understand what the barriers have been, see the inequity in those barriers and work to ultimately address them and remove them.
Amazing. So my last question, councillor King, is, you know, we celebrated your victory, you know, as Ottawa's first Black City councillor in 2019. Everyone was happy, including myself, very happy about this great accomplishment. What do you believe are steps that we can take to make sure that you're not the last, basically?
I think number one, we have to get people interested in politics. And it has to go beyond cultural or ethnic politics, to be frank. You know, you have to get involved in your geographic community. If you run for office, you know, you're not just representing your own cultural or ethnic community. You are representing all people within a certain geographic area. So it's important to actually build strong ties with people in those areas. And I think it's also important to build a commonality of purpose with people. I mean, that's part of the challenge because often, you know, that's a difficult task in some geographic communities that might not be possible. There might be so much conflict that you're not able to have a proper dialogue. But I think what you want to do is seek commonality. And the commonality that I seek in terms of, you know, when I'm talking in election to an electorate and to residents on a regular basis is improving quality of life, improving quality of life for everyone. Because no matter whether you live in a very affluent community or a lower-income community, everybody wants to see, you know, the tides rise. They want to see the boats become more buoyant. And, you know, people want to see general improvement across the board. And so that's an easy message. And then when you start having that message, people in more affluent communities look at the lower-income communities and they want the lower-income communities to prosper as well. And so, you know, I've been seeing that transformation in the last election. I mean, I was knocking on doors in Rockliff Park, one of the most affluent neighbourhoods, not just in the city, but in the country. And, you know, I had people opening the doors of like big mansions saying, you know, councillor, what are you doing about affordable housing? What are you doing to address poverty? In fact, all of the community associations within my ward, they joined with the Vanier Community Association. And I'm talking about community associations in more affluent places like Rockliff Park, like Lyndon Lee, like Manor Park. And they got together and they said, you know what? The number one challenge confronting this ward is poverty. And they worked on advocacy to ensure that I was able to go to committees and councils to advocate for a new poverty reduction strategy, which the city is starting to work on, as well as a food security policy, the first one that Ottawa is really putting together. And so, you know, it was the, those neighbours working together, actually writing reports, working on securing grants with CHMC to do studies on housing and writing reports on poverty. And you have to think about this. These are neighbourhoods that don't have those challenges. So, you know, I think it's the commonality and building commonality within communities. Another wonderful example is that those more affluent communities raised money during the middle of the pandemic. They said, we are going to work on enhancing mutual aid networks. And what they ultimately did was they raised $100,000 for the local food banks that would benefit the lower-income neighbourhoods in the ward. And they spent that money in the local community. So they went to the local traditional main streets. They said, you know, the food bank needs bread. We're going to buy that bread from our local baker. You know, we're going to get produce from our local grocer. And they transferred. So they not only put money into the community, $100,000, they ensured that those goods were transferred directly to other residents. And, you know, they were listening to those residents in terms of their needs. So I'm excited by the fact that, you know, we can build commonality, whether it's across income brackets, whether it's across, you know, different ethnic communities, you know, whether it's across geographies and even ideologies. They're basic things that, you know, we want to see in neighbourhoods, in communities. We want to see our communities prosper together because we know that if one neighbourhood is not prospering, there will be a negative impact on the other neighbourhoods. We won't have the strongest community that we could have. So I think that's the number one lesson and the number one recommendation I would give to anybody who wants to run. Often, you know, we have a lot of challenges and we want to address those challenges. But we can't be always narrowcast on just focusing on the challenges that our specific communities have. We have to be wider in our perception of the challenges that affect communities. And what you'll find is that there are some commonalities in some of those challenges, whether it's a lower-income community or a higher-income community. So, you know, I just get excited with bringing people together. You know, it's eye-opening. Other people see other people's lives, lived experiences and vice versa. And they want to help. And I can tell you that that's the greatest cultural transformation that you should try to engender if you are, you know, wanting to become an elected official. You want to bring people together and you want to work together. That's the way to win. And I think, you know, we are in a political environment that frankly is very divisive, that caters to, you know, specific bases, ideological bases, rather than just catering to wider communities. And I think we have to remember that you've got to serve, you've got to try to serve in the common good, the public interest in the widest way possible. And I think when you start thinking that way, you actually have a better chance of electoral success. The other elements, you just have to try. I tell people, you know what? Don't talk about it, just do it. You know, you can put your name into a race for a local school board. You can put your name into a race for a council seat. You know, just if you feel that you have that drive, that passion and you're interested in public service and serving the common good, you know, participate. And I think that that's the key. Because often, you know, there's a lot of grievances and rightfully so. People have a lot of complaints. They have a lot of issues that aren't being addressed. The only way that they can be addressed is through that representation. And, you know, the story I told you, one month I'm elected, there's elation. And then the next month, there's great deflation. The community comes together and says, you know, we actually want change. They propose change and then we're able to enable it through the establishment of anti-racism office and anti-racism strategy, a poverty reduction strategy, a food security policy. You know, change is possible, but I think in order for you to get there, you really have to engage with a wide number of stakeholders. It can't just be the community that you know. You have to step out of the comfort zone and engage with everybody and listen to everybody and get a sense of the wide range of concerns that are out there in order to greater engender, you know, the concerns of everybody. And so that's, that's what I would recommend. And I know I did that practically. You can do that by joining your local community association, by joining boards of local charities and nonprofit organisations that are doing good work in your community, by showing up to a lot of community meetings, listening to people, you know, going to community meetings in communities that you're not, you might not have direct links to, but, you know, starting to network in a sense to understand what are the variant concerns of people across your geography, your region, your city, your country, in a sense. And I think that that's, that's what we. And I think that that's, that's what we continue to to do. And the more of that that we do, the more that you'll see more members from diverse communities elected, I guarantee it.
Amazing. Words of wisdom from councillor King. Listen, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for doing this and we'll continue to support you in all the great things that you're doing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for giving a strong voice for our community. You know, it's important for us to have these outlets, for us to be able to have conversations, meaningful and in-depth conversations, and you're enabling that for our community. So I really thank you and commend you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.